All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight for our regular meeting for the month of October. Board members, on the tables before you, you have the proposed agenda for tonight. The floor would be open for a motion if we approve this or make any changes to the board's C step.
Move to approve budget for tonight?
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great. If you think they're going, would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's not on the agenda, but I do want to introduce our student board member tonight to everyone. Elena Sheridan is a, sorry for the tongue twister there, is a senior at FHS and student body president. So, welcome. Volleyball has kept her pretty busy on our previous board meeting so far this school year, so we're thrilled that you're here. Look forward to getting inputs from you on behalf of all of the student body during the course of this year.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, board members, you had the minutes to the September board meeting emailed out from Ms. Williams, and those are ready for your approval or any changes that you may have noted that need to be made. All right, thank you. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great. And then today, Ms. Williams emailed out to us the disbursements for the month of September. If you have not, you can take a look at those. We'll maintain a motion to approve the disbursements. Well, I emailed this reset. Oh, there we go.
Make a motion to approve September disbursements.
All right, got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion of any, or any questions about disbursements for the month? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Super. All right, principals reports. Mr. Parent, welcome.
All right. Good evening. I'm gonna represent all three schools tonight with our reports. So, first I'll start with Ralph Askins. Ralph Askins would like to congratulate Mr. Tim Hobbs and the cast from Ralph Askins that presented the play Disney, the movies, and the music. They worked hard preparing for the play, and it was a huge success, and they can't wait to see what's in store for next year. Upcoming this month, Ralph Askins will have the first nine weeks of awards ceremony on October 23rd, and they look forward to celebrating the academic success along with recognizing students for their character. And the last thing she has, their annual Fall Blast will be Thursday, October 30th, and that event will be from 3:30 until 6:30, and the PTO and teachers are working hard to prepare that event. Everyone is invited to come. They said they're gonna have some classroom games, a hayride, a carbash, and a chili supper. So, now moving on to the middle school. The middle school has completed their benchmark testing the week prior to fall break. They have morning tutoring programs, and she said that they've had 39 students attend those, and of those 39, 20 students are attending tutoring sessions daily. So, I know she was very pleased with those numbers and the amount of students that are participating. They partnered with the high school for teachers to observe, some of our teachers as far as teacher leaders, and so far it has seemed like a big success on both ends. They've been able to collaborate in their planning and different aspects of their lessons, and that's going really well so far. And she said she'd like to thank Coach Parent and Ms. Betsy for helping make that happen. Their first field trip, and this will be a behavior field trip, is gonna be this Thursday to Line Family Farms, and she said they'll have over two-thirds of their kiddos will be attending based on behavior.
On good behavior.
So, that's, yeah, on good behavior.
I'm assuming that's what they're doing.
And they had their fundraiser. She said it was a huge success. They sold 181 boxes of chocolate, so that's a lot of chocolate, so they did good there. Their after-school clubs are up and running, their gamers club, arts and crafts, and Tiger Spirit Club so far have been the most attended, but they do have a book club and a gardening club that have now started, and she said they average about 40 students in the afternoon that are staying for their clubs, so I know that's been really good for them. The last thing she had, she wanted to invite everyone to Fayetteville Middle School on October 27th at 6:00 p.m., and they're going to honor Maggie Warren at the basketball pinkout night. And then for Fayetteville High School, Mr. Hobbs and our drama department also worked on a hee-haw show at our school. It was a huge success as well. I just wanna thank, and I know Mr. Hobbs wants to thank, all of the students and the FCS staff, not just high school staff members. We had staff members from all over the system that helped with that show, and I felt like it was a big success. He does have a dinner party, and it is themed how to host a murder mystery, and that's gonna be coming up November 1st at 6:00 p.m., so I invite you guys to come. Tickets are $20, but that also includes a meal during the performance. So, I know that night, we've talked a little bit about that night, and it's gonna be a really fun night as well. This Friday, our seniors are going to the Second Annual Fall Festival put on by Motlow, and last year we went, it was really great for our kids to go. Motlow has this plan to kinda introduce them to the campus and let our students see what they offer, so, you know, as their plans move forward, so they'll know exactly what Motlow offers here in Fayetteville. Our fall seasons for volleyball and girls soccer have come to an end. Both teams had great seasons, and I just wanted to say that I'm proud of all the girls and coaches involved in both teams. Y'all really, y'all had a great season this year. Football is still playing. Region-wise, we have done really well so far, and we look to keep that up this Friday at Moore County. I do wanna mention, kind of along that note, October 24th will be our next home game, and before the game, as part of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we are gonna honor Ms. Maggie Warren as well, and that'll be before the game. And then at halftime, we are gonna honor our 2020 state championship team. So, we look forward to seeing all those guys come back and get to mingle with them, so. October 22nd, we'll have our senior ACT, and then our juniors will take the ASVAB that day, so that's coming up. And then Monday, October 27th, the FMS and FHS bands will have their Halloween concert, and that will be at FHS GM starting at 6 o'clock. And then the last thing I have here, on Thursday, October 30th, we're gonna have a Halloween movie night for our students out on the football field. And I wanna say a special thank you to Elena Sheridan and our student government. They have handled it all, and it's gonna be another great night on Tiger Hill. It's something I think they've done in the past. It's been a little while, but we're looking forward to it. So, yep. But that's all I have.
Can you confirm the band concert?
27th, October 27th. Yeah, Monday, Monday, October 27th at 6:00 p.m.
All right. Do you have a question? Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. Appreciate all y'all doing. I assume we didn't have any members of the public request to speak?
There were no requests.
All right. We'll move along to the supervisors and the reports from Mr. McCormick and Ms. Thompson. I figured you'd wanna go first.
It's your show.
Yeah. Be careful with that.
I don't have all the interest.
I don't know about that either. Along the line, fall break kinda signals our big test and assessment calendar. Of course, like Coach Parent mentioned, with senior retake coming up next week, I just wanna make a point to mention all the work Ms. Thompson and Mr. Parent and the staff at FHS have done for ACT boot camp. I know they're working really hard to get those kids prepped and ready for that test, and it's awesome improvement in scores from last year as a result of it, so appreciate all their hard work in getting those kids ready. October 31st will be our next teacher work day, and kinda along the lines of the collaboration that he mentioned as well, we're gonna do some more content area sessions for our teachers so that they have the opportunity to kinda mingle with each other, share ideas, share strategies. Been really impactful, I think, from the feedback that we're getting. Everybody seems to enjoy it, and like I said, huge thanks to our content leads, and you may have already mentioned this in prior meetings, but Ms. Davis, Mr. DeHart, Ms. Benash, and myself are kinda the leads on that, and I really appreciate their help in stepping up and wanting to kinda shoulder some of that responsibility to help those teachers out, so looking forward to that. But that's pretty much all I have for tonight.
Any questions? McCormick or Ms. Thompson?
Thank y'all.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Williams, our CFO.
The first quarter of September, July through September, financial reports were emailed to you earlier, and I would entertain any questions you may have. Your revenue and expenditure comparison reports.
Yes. Okay, if not now, anytime, right?
That's right.
We can ask you questions, follow-up questions on that. Thank you, we do appreciate those monthly revenue and expenditure updates. Let's see, committee reports, facilities and transportation.
On the facilities, transportation, and I'll start with transportation. We've got a number of buses that are just developing, little mechanical issues, small stuff, but we've had two that we've had to tow. Sensors will go out, and it'll lock up the brakes, and then you have to tow a bus that's got locked brakes, and that's really expensive, and they're newer buses, so it's easily fixed, and we're getting them fixed, but at the same time, you know, while we've got a good fleet and everything's in good shape, and we've got the best group of bus drivers anywhere around, we're very blessed in that regard. It's, you know, it's mildly frustrating when you're spending $130,000, $150,000 on equipment, and then it goes down, and then you have to drag it to be fixed, but that is being repaired. It hasn't impacted routes in any way, shape, or form, but that is an expense that we're noticing. For facilities, during the break, there was a new section of gate put up on around the older kids' playgrounds at Ralph Askins, and two of, actually three of the awnings that were coming off the end of the building have been installed, and the one stair step going down to the annex, and then the two coming out from the pre-K kindergarten hallways. So, that'll be helpful, they both look great. The one going down to the annex looks really good, looks better than I thought it would, so that's nice. The part coming from the annex that wasn't made, there was a, there was a measurement issue when they got some of the metal out there, and they realized they needed to make some adjustments, so we're waiting on that metal to be modified, and then they'll put it in once it's modified, but everything's in good shape, it's still on go. The FEMA project, what I've been told from FEMA, really TEMA at this point, everything's on go. Looks like we are one document away, the mayor of Fayetteville tomorrow night. We hope there's gonna be a discussion, and that she will sign a document for us. It requires her signature and my signature. Once that document is signed, we should be full go for moving forward and breaking ground with our additional funding that we requested, which puts the total project cost to around $13 million. 90% of that will come from federal funding, 5% from state, and 5% will be our local share that we have signed the MOU to pay for as Fayetteville City Schools. We're looking at $2.3 to $2.6 million total expenditure. We have over $3 million saved for the project, so that puts us well within our budget, and even if we, you know, if we decided we wanted to upgrade some seating or something like that, we're completely well within budget. So, we're looking forward to hopefully that being signed sometime in the immediate future, and then moving forward with a groundbreaking ceremony, you know, in a few months. So, I'll let you know how everything goes at the Board of Mayor and Oliver meeting tomorrow night. I have asked Greg and some of the gang from JBHM and from Broadus to come in case there are any technical questions anybody has, and so I would add that to the city agenda. But that's kinda where we stand. The buildings seem to be in good shape. We're doing well with our energy savings after some of the upgrades and modifications we made. We're finally seeing some return on that. Things are holding up pretty well right now, so outside of the new buses, we're doing...
Those buses, do they, do they have school buses?
They do have a warranty. It's limited, it's not that, the newer ones get fixed, but then what we're noticing is right after, they're about a year warranty, and right after that, we're having some issues. I mean, it's like clockwork. It's almost like it's, you know, I don't wanna say anything in an open meeting, but it's very suspicious.
You can pay it off.
But even within that, the fact that, you know, if something locks up and it's a brand-new vehicle, you have, there's an initial expense that we pay for the towing and things like that, because brake sensors, that's an uncommon thing to go out, but we've seen that happen.
I wonder if other systems who bought these same, similar buses are seeing that.
We will find out within the next six months, because it's a...
As you go to conventions and things, we'll hear stories.
Well, the bus, the National Transportation Safety Board is really good about bus recalls, and so everything from the threads on the seats to, they're just, everything's fine to come with them, so I'll say if there are many of these, they will be, there will be a recall sent out for a fix to that. Because that's, I believe Coach Good was driving the bus that locked up. I could be wrong, but I think that's the case. She's an excellent driver, but if you're going, you know, even in our routes in the city, if you're going 30, 35 miles an hour with a mini-ton bus filled with children, and then you lock the brakes, that's dangerous. It's like, you know, that's a dangerous scenario to try to navigate through.
Wow.
But our team's great. Melissa and Jeff had it organized, they had another bus pull up, got the kids switched over, finished their route, got the bus towed. Grateful to some of the local people around for helping us out with that. It worked out.
And everybody was safe?
Everybody's good.
Unharmed and all that?
No harm.
Yep.
Scared.
Scared, yes, for sure. All right, any questions about facilities or transportation? All right, under finance, we have two budget amendments. The first is budget amendment number one to the FY26 general purpose budget, and I can simplify this just by telling you that there are, these are all new grant funds for FY26, Public School Safety Security Grant, the Innovative School Models Grant, and my understanding is this is the final year for that particular grant, and then the Special Ed Preschool Grant. Those are funds that will be added to, once the city, once the city board and this board approve, those funds will be added into the FY26 budget. So, next month, when you see the monthly reports from Ms. Williams, these funds will be reflected because those are new funds through these three different grants that will be added into budget revenues for FY26, so, which is always exciting. So, I would make a motion that we approve FY26 general purpose budget amendment number one.
Second.
All right, thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion of questions? That make sense? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. All right, thanks. And then we also have a line item amendment of just frankly moving around some dollars within some lines. The previous budget amendment does go to the city for approval, this one does not since it's just within line items in the same category, overall category, so I would make a motion that we approve FY26 general purpose line item amendment number two.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any questions about this particular amendment? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. All right, thank you. That's all we had from Finance Committee. Insurance and policy have a few things for us tonight.
I make a motion to approve policy 5.305, FMLA, on the second reading.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All right. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve policy 4.210 on the credit recovery on the second reading.
All right, have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. All right.
I make a motion to approve policy 2.806, bids in quotations, on the second reading.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve policy 6.312, the use of wireless communication devices, on the second reading.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you.
And then I make a motion to approve policy 2.804, expenses and reimbursement on the first reading.
All right, have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Thank you. Anything else from Policy and, from Policy and Insurance Committee? I think that's all. Sorry, I was remembering. Yeah, 2.804 was the one that was in today's email.
That's right, yes.
Perfect, all right, thank y'all. Mr. Jones?
I would like to ask the board each year at this time, over the last couple of years and for the foreseeable future, we will need to approve the TISA accountability report. There's a copy of the modified TISA accountability report in your file. All the changes are highlighted in yellow. Appreciate the help from my team on that, but the quick version is, it's the same report as last year with the new numbers in. We had a, I think like a 1.5% growth in the reading, or ELA area, and like a 16% growth in the math area, so we fell short of our growth target for the one, even though we did show improvement, and we far exceeded our target on the other. As the years go by, they'll come more in a consistent range, but early on, while we're developing our targets, we, you know, we don't really have a mean or a median to shoot for, so we're kinda shooting for the moon. And, but, yeah, we're pleased with everything's going, but if y'all would approve that, then I will add that to our plans and E plan, and that will get us cohesive with accordance with state law of Tennessee.
Okay, and that was, that report, draft of that report was sent in the October 8th email that Ms. Williams sent us, so we had a chance to see that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve that TISA accountability report.
Second.
All right, thank you. Have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great.
The next thing I have is, I would like to ask the board to approve the FFA chapter attending the 98th Annual FFA Convention and Expo in Indianapolis. That is an annual trip attended by thousands of young people and future leaders, and our kids always go and enjoy themselves and learn a lot and have a great experience, and I would hope that the board would approve that trip again this year.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you.
The last thing that I have is, I would like to request that the board approve the FHS Beta Club attending the State Beta Convention at the O'Fallon, Gaylord O'Fallon Convention Center, November 20th through 22nd. I know a lot of times when we go to TSBA, we see them there, and again, it's an outstanding opportunity for those young scholars and future leaders, and I hope y'all continue to support them with an approval of this request.
I make a motion.
Okay, have a motion? Thank you.
Second.
And a second? In discussion of that item, my only disappointment is the dates don't line up this year. It's, there's a little gap.
They lost this time.
So, I hate we won't cross paths. That's always really fun, when we get to see each other there. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great, thank you.
concludes my report, Mr. Jones.
All right, thanks. Under my report, we're continuing to honor some of our employees this month. The resolution for your consideration is to honor our custodians, and man, when you think about the role that they play and the responsibilities they have for not just waste removal, but sanitizing things, deep cleaning, especially coming out of the COVID years and the concern over, the really real concern over spreading disease, such an important role, maintaining school facilities, and I mean, it all comes, I mean, the great record this school system has of facilities that are quite old but look quite nitties begins every day, and every day begins again with the way we care for those facilities, and our custodians really, really deserve this recognition. You know, they're generally the first to arrive and the last to leave, whatever event, even if there are ballgames going into the night, they're there to help make sure the facilities are returned and ready for school the next day. When you think about the health of our students and staff and any visitors to the school campus, and this resolution before you is honoring them in that way, and it resolves that this board expresses our heartfelt appreciation to custodians whose steadfast service ensures that our schools remain clean, secure, and conducive to both teaching and learning, and that each school is encouraged to engage students, staff, and... learning, and that each school is encouraged to engage students, staff, and families in honoring Custodian Appreciation Day on October 23rd, and celebrating with our, with, in this case, UTRUST has suggested a bold and courageous spirit of a firefighter theme for their, they, they always have a theme for the day, and that's the theme for the day as we honor our custodians. So if the board chooses to adopt that resolution, we would be open for a motion.
Move to approve the resolution for Custodian Appreciation Day.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. And my last thing is just to sort of look at, at the calendars, November 3rd, Monday, November 3rd, would be our next board meet, regularly scheduled board meeting, just to double check that that works for everybody, or do we need to look at rescheduling? Okay, make sure we're bringing you leftover Halloween candy from the weekend's activities, right, to share. All right, well, hearing nothing, then we'll plan to see everyone again for the November meeting on November 3rd. Any final comments, anything from the student body, Sheridan?
Right now, we just had a, we just started our socktober. We'll be doing the donations again for the fuzzy socks for the, since it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And then the movie, as Coach Parent said, we're really excited about that. That's been one of my main things, and I definitely had everyone behind me on that. And then the last thing we had is the seniors, our biggest goal is to hit the state benchmark for the ACT coming up next week, so.
Good. Well, thanks for your leadership. Absolutely appreciate that. It's exciting. Okay, well, if no, no other business, we will stand adjourned. Y'all have a great rest of your week.